Good evening, everyone. It is 7:05 PM and I hereby call to order the November 2021 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise for the pledge of wishes to our flag? I pledge my wishes to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where wishes stand: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We will begin with a village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
Yes, so in the past month, two K rolls were processed by Treasurer Day. Four hundred and sixty-two tags, trash tags, were sold. Our deputy clerk or planning and zoning secretary continues to assist with the planning and zoning boards. And just an update that the office will be closed next week, Thursday and Friday, November 25th and 26th, for the Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Just want to interrupt our normal flow. We have two resolutions that came in pretty late. You've got copies of those?
I did.
These have to do with accepting some grants that we won, but they are not on the printed agenda, so I just wanted to let everyone know. We'll have a chance to talk about those before we vote. Moving on to minutes, we have a single set of minutes. October 20th, regular meeting. Trustees, if you have a chance to review those, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Ezzoradi, on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to treasurer's report. This month, in the general fund, the A Fund, we spent $311,181.27, and that is also our grand total. About 140 of that was the recently completed Shoreline Stabilization Project down at the river, which I hope everyone has visited. It really came out so well, and I know some of us have been working on this for 12 years. I'm not looking at Susan over there. So that's the treasurer's report. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pay the bills.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pay the bills. Zoning report.
Yes.
Trustee Azaradi, please.
Yes, our code enforcement officer, Gary Beck, has been busy. He has reviewed eight building permits, issued five, received six complaints, and investigated all six. He's identified five zoning property maintenance violations, had no appearance, issued no appearance tickets, entered into five municipal searches, done 10 inspections, and provided code enforcement training to our zoning board, and done no fire inspections.
Thank you, Trustee Ezzoradi. We are now at the point when we welcome the public to comment on our agenda items. There's a general comment period at the end of the meeting. We like to hear from the public on the things we're about to vote on, so that's part one, the public comment period. Tonight's agenda, we have return of the tax roll to Dutchess County, and then, as I had mentioned a minute ago, two resolutions authorizing Tivoli to accept grants for generators through the municipal investment grant program. The first generator is for this building. The grant award is $25,000, and the second grant is for the sewer plant, and that grant award for a generator at the sewer plant is $50,000. So is there any public comment on the tax roll or those two grant awards? Okay, thank you. We'll move on. The tax roll, we just do by motion? Is that right? All right. Is there a motion to return the tax roll to Dutchess County?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our first resolution is authorizing the execution of an agreement with the county of Dutchess for Village Hall Generator Project through the municipal investment grant program. Is there a motion to move the resolution?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just think it's fabulous.
It's gonna be nice.
We needed this generator for many, many years.
Yes, it will allow this building to be operational.
Right. It will keep the elevator moving. It'll just do a lot of things, of course.
Yes. Roll call, vote. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Ezzoradi?
Aye.
Trustee Mangieri?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Congratulations to Tivoli on laying that grant. And our second one, this is the sewer plant for $50,000. Is there a motion allowing me to enter the agreement with Dutchess County?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, same thing.
Same thing, did it?
Awesome.
There is a little nuance here, so as most folks know, the village is in the process of transferring the water and sewer systems to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. That transfer doesn't finish until we've completed, what's it called, substantial completion of the capital project. So we've done the water tower and the water mains. We still have to do the wells. Then the sewer plant is essentially going to be replaced, and we have a lot of state funding that's paying for all of that, and we can't transfer the systems to the water authority until we spend the state's money and get that work done. So we, the village, will be getting this generator for the sewer plant, and it will go with the sewer plant to the DCWWA when the time comes, but we shall feel good because that's a $50,000 ticket item that the users of the sewer system will not have to buy later or pay for later, so.
And I was here in 2010 when we had an untimely ice storm, and the fact that the generator had to be manually turned on, and the ice storm occurred in the middle of the night. In the morning, one of the tanks that processes the sewage was out of the ground. So the generator is a very important item.
Yes, I want that functioning 24/7 for sure. Roll call, vote, please. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Ezzoradi?
Aye.
Trustee Mangieri?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Thank you. Our next board meeting will be held Wednesday, December 15th, at 7:00 PM, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM, right here at the Historic West Depeister Hall. And we will have our regular workshop on December 8th. We've been using this room up here on the third floor, and that will be at 7 o'clock, the workshop, December 8th at 7:00. Moving into our committee reports, trustee Ezzoradi, please.
Just remember that the firehouse expansion is on its way, and that fire department is soliciting funds, and we're hopeful that we will have sufficient funds to get that building started, and there are some pretty good indications that we will. The Lo-Set program has been doing exceptionally well, and thanks in large part to the stock market doing well, but we've had a 6% return on that since its inception, which was our goal, and it's now well over $200,000. I think that's about it for this.
Thank you, trustee Ezzoradi. Trustee Baldino could not be with us this evening, so I will read the court report. This is for charges October 1st through October 31st, 2021. Charges received, one. Charges disposed, eight. Total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller in fines, $620. Surcharges, $125, for a total of $745. Trustee Mangieri, and do you want to talk about Climate Smart Communities and the certification in addition to whatever else you might have?
I think it's really an awesome thing that we have the opportunity to be able to have access to that. I didn't get a chance to dig in too much to it, but from what I saw, it sounds like we have some points.
Yeah, so just for the benefit of those who aren't following this, there is a state program called Climate Smart Communities, and many municipalities around the state are pursuing this, and obviously, the intention is to incentivize greener practices by municipalities for the obvious reason that we're facing a climate crisis. But there are rankings. There's no one in the state who's achieved gold. There is silver. I believe the city of Kingston has achieved silver, and there are many bronzes. Tivoli is going to try and achieve bronze ranking, and the state funds a consultant from the Cornell Cooperative Extension that trustee Mangieri and I have been starting to meet with. And the first thing is to identify any actions we have taken over the last 10 years that will earn us points towards bronze certification, and there are quite a few things. And another thing that we will be looking to do in the beginning of the year is a requirement to pursue this certification is that we establish a Climate Smart Communities Task Force here in the village, so we will be looking for volunteers to serve on a task force. When all the points that we think we could chase are identified, and then the ones we've already achieved are noted, there will be some actions that we've identified Tivoli can do, should do, and has not. And the purpose of the task force is to lead the effort to complete those remaining actions that will get us to the points for certification. So I'm grateful to trustee Mangieri for joining me on this effort, and we'll get some help from some residents beginning of the year. So if you're interested in anything about that, let me know. Deputy Mayor Major?
Okay. Well, the library, as usual, has a ton of great programming and some holiday programming as well, so check it out at tivolilibory.org. Mark your calendars for Winter Fest this year, December 11th, and we're going to have, among other things, Santa, horse and wagon rides, caroling treats, lights, and festive fun. Vote for them. Claremont is doing a house tour, inside and out, on the 27th of November at 11:00 and 2:00, and if you've not been inside and looked around the outside of Claremont, check it out. It's a really, it's a great historic site and lots to see. The Montgomery Place grounds at the south part of the Bard campus are open to the public, and it's never a bad time to take a stroll down there. Tivoli Bay is, I'm going to keep celebrating that cane launch all year long. We finally have it, so everybody should get out there and use it or just walk down to it, hang out. There's a nice bench that you can sit on, you can watch the tide come and go, you can watch those four-spine stickleback as they swim along, and, you know, watch the sunset. It's a beautiful place, and, you know, use the heck out of it. Do be careful, though, because it is until December 12th deer season, and that, it's okay to hunt between 30 minutes before sunrise and 30 minutes after sunset. And it's also pheasant season until February 28th, and with that, you can only hunt from sunrise to sunset. So I'm wondering just why there's that distinction between the deer and the pheasants, and who's moving around when and when you can shoot them. But anyway, no matter what, wear your safety orange when you're out in the bays and check for ticks afterwards. A word we're going to be throwing around a lot lately, or, you know, in the next few months, is sesquicentennial, because we're coming up on it as a village. This will be the 150th anniversary in 2022 of our incorporation as a village, so all year long, we're going to be celebrating the heck out of Tivoli's history. And if you would like to be involved in this planning and implementing of outrageous festivities, get in touch with me, and let's have some fun.
Absolutely. Sesquicentennial is going to be great, and we've already heard from some people who were around in 1972 for the centennial, including, we do have notes from Bernie Teager, village historian, trustee, and the one who basically put that on.
Driving force.
So we have the notes from the last party 50 years ago to riff off of, so that'll be fun. I want to point out to folks, if you've seen at the north end of our basketball court in Memorial Park, we've completed a memorial to Dave Buck Moreno, who we lost in 1995. There at once, when Mark Monar was mayor, when that happened, and he had dedicated the basketball court to Buck, that was, took the form of a sign that blew down, fell down, was torn down, went away. And a really wonderful story when we were doing our, I'd always wanted to reestablish that dedication, and we have a lot of memorials in Memorial Park, the pavilion, the softball field, there's a bench, some trees. It truly is hallowed ground over there. And I always wanted to get to it, and when they were doing the water main, and they were dating the trench for the new water main, and they got down towards the bridge, they encountered this enormous boulder, and they had all their heavy equipment, and I guess they know when they find rocks like that and say, "Hey, mayor, you want this rock?" And of course, they said, "That's the one, yes." So the gentleman doing the water main took it over to the park, and you may have seen it sitting by a bus stop for a few months, and then when they deconstructed the water tower, a different contractor did us the favor of carting it across the park and putting it in its final location. And then some friends and family of Buck raised some money, and we got a nice bronze plaque that is bolted to a rock, and I don't think it's going to go anywhere. So the family came back. We had a very nice gathering last weekend. They sent me a very touching card for Tivoli remembering their family member, and I just hope people will stop by and take a look at it and remember Dave Moreno.
How old was he when he passed?
Early twenties.
Oh, he was a basketball player, huh?
Absolutely, yeah.
He was always there.
Yeah. And I just want to say, yeah, go down and see the Shoreline Stabilization if you haven't. Thank you and congratulations to the Tivoli Fire Department for excellent pancake breakfast. I did eat some for you, too, because we were out of town. It was really nice in the bays, you know, they pulled the trucks out, we've got all that glass in those windows, and it was a beautiful sunny day, and it was just a really pleasant time to eat and be with folks, and they raised more money for the expansion, so the effort continues. And, you know, again, we've been talking about this, but the TFD is growing, it's robust, there's great morale. They have over 60 members now, and 26, I believe, by last count, interior firefighters.
Whoa.
This is quite unheard of for a municipality of our size in our area, so ever grateful to the TFD for pancakes and more. Okay, so with that, we'd like to open the floor to public comment on any topic.
William Schilling, my wife and I live at 27 Montgomery Street. The last six months, there's been a number of incidents on Montgomery Street as far as noise, rowdiness, drinking, public drinking, kids getting carried up and down the street because they're too drunk to walk. I'm just wondering, what, how is the village helping us with the rowdiness problem? We've got houses, some of these houses, if you ask me, there are a lot more kids living in these homes than are, there are bedrooms. Is code enforcement, do you guys have code enforcement looking at these houses? Have there been any sentences written to these rentals? It's just, it's, it's been, it was a rough fall.
Yeah.
Rough fall.
Very sorry to hear that, aware of it, hate it, something I personally care deeply about, and I know the rest of the board as well. This has been a long thing going on in the village, and as far as what the village is doing or has done to help, so little background, in 2015, when I came in, we increased the penalty for the noise violation from 50 to 150 for our first offense. We also studied other communities and adopted a law that's called a nuisance gathering law, and if you have people at your residence and any of your guests violate one of 13 other things, which is already legal, public urination, noise, parking.
Open container.
Open container, et cetera, your gathering just became a nuisance gathering, and that is entirely additional ticket. And that, if you have a third at the same address in a, it's been a while.
$1,000.
Two-year period, the landlord starts getting the tickets. So we put in place, and there were a lot of, this was back in 2015, 2016, we have also worked with the college to change the shuttle schedules, and only they do that, but we've also been able to, with their goodwill, cut the hours at which the shuttles were bringing lots of people into our village to do these kinds of things. And I'm certainly grateful for what changes the college has made in the shuttle schedule. All of that hinges on, and I know you'll have something to add, all of this hinges on all of us, the village and residents, contacting the Dutchess County Sheriff so they can come and write these tickets. It is my belief that, you know, there's been lots of, go talk to your neighbor, be a good neighbor, try and talk. Sometimes that works. Nobody wants to get up in the middle of the night and go to a house full of rowdy people for the most part. I just think that that is not the most direct and effective way to, you know, we need to not just address an individual event, we need to create a culture in this village where everyone understands this is not acceptable and doesn't happen here. And I think it's been a while since we all, residents, had the deputies on their phones and made those calls and reported these things, and I think that it's tickets and consequences that change behavior, and the only people that can write the tickets are the deputies.
Has the code enforcement wrote any tickets to the rentals? Have they gone out and looked at the rentals? Who looks at the rentals as far as health issues? Is that only the county?
No.
Does the code enforcement go into a home and say, you know, "You've got 10 kids sleeping in a place that only has three bedrooms, and the attic is a fire trap"?
Yes.
Does the village do that?
The village can do that.
That is in your purview?
Yes, it's our building inspector, and if...
Has that happened?
But he has to get, he has to receive a complaint.
He has to receive a complaint.
Well, except for multifamily buildings.
Right, not for single families.
There's an every-three-year inspection process for bigger...
But that would be like the schoolhouse or...
Right.
Still for single families.
It's entirely a mechanism that can be deployed if there's a concern that's been identified and brought to the code enforcement officers' attention, that there could be excessive occupancy, that's absolutely something that he'd do.
Who would I call?
The code enforcement.
Gary Beck, give me the phone number and email, it's on our website.
Yeah. Bizio@Tivoli.
Yeah, Tivoli NY.
What, do you have, his phone number is on the website?
Yes, yep. Under, there's a tab on the Home Page Building Department, and it's in there.
So he does, he does follow up on complaints, because I'm looking at the report that he gave you this month, and he's been...
So how could I get, how could I get a copy of that report? Do I need to foil that?
The report, this is just a report that says, no, I'm going to do it here, it just says a number of complaints he's investigated. It doesn't tell you what he did.
Doesn't tell you the outcomes?
No.
Other things that we've done, and that are the tools that are available for residents to use, we also reach out directly to landlords who are being grateful of what goes on in a rental, and we also communicate with deans at the college. Unfortunately, a lot of these individuals are students at Bard College, not all of them, but enough of them, and so I'm happy to give you the contact information for various deans who have been increasingly responsive, I would say.
The more, the more complaints there are.
Yeah.
But I think there, there does need to be a police complaint if there's a nuisance gathering.
Absolutely.
Right away, at the, at the date, at the time, because then there's a police report to deal with.
Right.
And they can issue tickets. So I don't know if you did that, but...
I have not been out talking, I go out, last time, when girls were thrown up in the street, they had to carry, and they were literally carrying drunk girls up and down the street, I refused to go out. My neighbor Larry went out. He went out and dealt with it, they told him, you know, "Go fuck yourself and get back in the house, old man," which they've said to me, too. I've had that, too.
Yeah. The sheriff does this very well. It's, it's, it's an appropriate use of law enforcement.
And I would also add, I want to know every morning or at that night, I mean, I want to know when these things are happening, because it has been a priority of mine since taking office, because things were so bad 10 years ago. I really care about this, and so any resident who's having these experiences like you are, I want to hear about it and I want to work on it.
Well, unfortunately, they never show up here, you know, it's always been the next day, we're all talking, da-da-da, but nobody really follows through. Also, the cars, the public nuisance, cars have parked the wrong way on Montgomery Street more and more. I see them, last, last 48 hours, there's been two cars parked the wrong way on Montgomery Street. It's just, the act in itself of parking the wrong way really doesn't matter, but it's an attitude, it's a, that...
It's also illegal.
It's also illegal.
Yeah, but I don't see anything done, I don't see any tickets.
We've had a number of tickets written on this, we've been aware of it, and I have, I have patrols on that are specifically looking for that phenomenon. We've been talking about that at least the last two months at this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, when you say you have patrols, how many patrols? How often, how much is the frequency?
It can be weekly, sometimes.
Once a week?
Sometimes, I mean, we don't tell everyone what the patrol schedule is, so...
I don't need to know the schedule, but I'm just trying to get a sense of how often.
Yeah, it can vary, could be eight patrols in a month, could be one patrol in a month, really, you know, we understand how these problems are pretty seasonal. And again, if, if I receive more complaints and I'm given the information, I can't be in every part of the village every night, then I can put on police and get things done. But I really can't recommend strongly enough to everyone who is concerned about these, as soon as you have a problem, call the deputies. That gets things going.
Okay.
I mean, we have tried so many different approaches, you know, I mean, we do tons of outreach, we talk to landlords, you know...
With the community potlucks, are they?
The community potlucks, we're working for, with Center for Speaking to Young Students that like...
Potlucks are nice, so there's some kids that are always going to be nice, and there's other kids who get right in your face, they don't care, they're privileged, you know, the whole deal going on.
Yeah, well, this is my point, we take in all approaches, strategy, but I truly believe that at some point, to get the worst actors, you really need law enforcement.
And I, I hear your frustration, but I was here in 2015 when we introduced this law, and in this room, we had 85 people, including 30 students, and when we got to the point where we said the third incident cost $1,000, we had a young man say, "I can't afford that," which was the point, and the mayor said, "You can avoid the fine, just don't do it." And there was a material, immediate change in behavior, but it requires the threat of the fine or the actuality of the fine, and the only way that can happen is if you call the sheriff.
And it's also, unfortunately, it's Groundhog Day here in Tivoli, because we go through this every, right, as people, so it's, it's just to say that even though it was terrible, it got better, you know, we have to stay on top of this and stay vigilant, because the individuals are changing all the time, and they don't, you know, some of them were in... And they don't, you know, some of them were in sixth grade in another state when Tivoli said, hey, enough is enough, and now they're here and they didn't know any of that history, so.
The other thing that's a challenge is that, you know, a lot, you know, the student residents who live here end up understanding, right, like, this is a community, it's a small town, nobody lives here hating it, right? But, you know, the shuttle, whatever hour it's running, is bringing people here who don't live here, and who don't have a connection to the community and are looking for a party, right? And there's no way to enforce or change their attitudes about the village unless there's a cultural change on campus, right? Like, there has to be a larger, a larger messaging campaign than just what we're doing here, right? Because if, you know, if your neighbors are making noise, you know, you can call the cops, they can get a ticket, we can talk to the landlord, the landlord can talk to them and their parents, you know, the deans can talk to them, but like, the random kids who are peeling on your lawn and don't live here, who's gonna tell them, right? Who are they? We don't know.
Only the police, only the police.
Right.
Or color enforcement, or public safety, or...
Yeah.
Right, so...
There's also in Tivoli a parking limit on every property, and that we can ask the code enforcement officer to look at cars parked, but if they're parked between 11 and 3 in the morning during the snow, he's not gonna be here. That's the sheriff that you have to call.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we were talking about backwards parking, and the hour before you came in, it's absolutely bizarre, I'm seeing it all over the village, I don't why, I don't know why people can't be bothered to turn around and park correctly. But, I mean, I understand why it's illegal, you're crossing oncoming traffic twice, but it does continue this attitude that like, anything goes, it doesn't matter, it's disrespectful to the people who live here, and it bothers me a lot. We need help, the board needs help, I need help, I need residents, when there's a problem, to call the deputies. That's an important piece, and we'll do everything we can, any other tool in the box, from deans to landlords, to, you know, the deputy mayor and I have gone door to door at times to talk to them. But as you have encountered, and Larry encountered, some of them, very disrespectful people.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you, Bill, it's important. And these other folks who are talking about it the next morning, and they're not coming, or writing in, please tell them to reach out, I really...
I try.
Yeah, appreciate that.
And, you know, we will happily share the email address with the deans, because...
We have had particular addresses that have been, you know, problematic multiple times, and we figure out where they are, and we contact the deans, and they speak with them, you know, I think we should be doing everything we can from every angle, you know, a chat with a dean might be enough for one person. Unfortunately, you know, a cop at your door writing a ticket might be what it takes for another person.
Yeah.
Other comment from the public or from the board? We're not gonna be back before Thanksgiving, so just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, safe Thanksgiving, and we've got lots to do in the next few months, we're gonna be busy. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sound move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? 7:39, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving.